Good evening. I call to order the May meeting of the Florence City Planning Commission. And as usual, on behalf of the commissioners and the planning staff, I want to thank everybody for being here tonight. We're a little shorthanded. We barely make four of them. We needed five, and we got it. We have one other commissioner that is running a little late, but will be here later. So from a parliamentary standpoint, we can get started. We normally start at six. It's 5:06, and I don't like that as chairman. Okay, so I'm gonna ask Mr. Moses to give our invocation.
Okay. Thank you. Thank everyone who's here today. And always with memos, say, always, let's pray for one another, because we don't know when it'll be our last time. Dear Lord, we want to thank you for the gathering here tonight, for the goodness of the city of Florence. Thanks for the people that are here, gathered here today. Bless everyone home. Bless everyone to have a safe trip back home. These are the blessings of your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Moses. On an inside note, I just want to let the commissioners and staff know that one of our commissioners, Ms. Betty Gregg, had cataract surgery this morning, and she cannot be with us this evening. But we all wish her a fast recovery on that. All right. The first item on the agenda is approval of last month's minutes. The commissioners have received their packet. They've had a chance to review the minutes. And if there are no changes, corrections, I call for a motion.
Move we approve.
Have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Like signs, nay, and ayes have it. All right. The first item on the agenda, we have the big man on this one tonight. This is PC 2024-11. I didn't mean that physically.
I'm working on it.
Mr. Dudley, staff report, please.
Thank you, Chairman. If I could get the power point pulled up here. There we go. So as you recall, during our last meeting, we discussed the tattoo ordinance changes. And we had a little bit of conflict. I thought that we could clarify the ordinance a bit. So Planning Commission deferred it such that staff could have a chance to rework it a bit. So I'm gonna go through the changes and along the way, explain the difference between or what specialty uses are versus the tattoo facilities. So originally, tattoo facilities were lumped into the specialty use category, as well as having their own category. So it really led to a lot of confusion and a lot of, I guess, double kind of regulation put on them. So what we've done is we've, in the use chart, originally, tattoo facilities were only allowed in the commercial general as a conditional use. And what we've done is we've put them in there as the same areas that a specialty use would be allowed. So as you can see, a few lines just above where the tattoo is listed, the specialty uses are listed, and it shows under those four categories, which would be the commercial general, the central business district, the activity center, and the destination services, which are all commercial districts. We've changed it to also include, as you can see in the red there, where we added the central business district, the activity center, and the destination services zoning districts to allow the tattoo facilities.
Chair, you can't zoom on this table, can you?
I cannot.
We have several commissioners that don't have their package.
Oh, sorry.
That's not your fault.
That's all right. I've got it over here.
Okay.
I can look down.
All right.
Okay.
So specialty uses, I'm gonna skip one here. So specialty uses are defined as, it means a commercial use that tends to be an indicator of urban block, particularly when located in close proximity to established residential areas. And this phrase includes, but it's not limited to. And originally, it included tattoo parlors. We have taken that out of specialty uses. But it also includes shops where smoking, tobacco, and other products is permitted, such as a cigar shop or a hookah bar, shops that principally sell paraphernalia associated with the illicit drug use. It goes on to explain that. Consignment stores, thrift stores, retail stores that stock some sexually related goods, but not to the volume of where they're classified as a sexually oriented business. Movie retail stores and theaters that offer sexually explicit movies, but not at the volume where they're classified as sexually oriented businesses. Pawn shops, bail bonds, payday lawns, and check cashing stores, and title lawns. And the restrictions put on these try to prevent an accumulation or a high density of these uses put together. And we'll go over some of those regulations and how they are changed a little bit with the tattoo facility. So this is the current definition in our zoning ordinance. We are proposing to take tattoo parlors out of this and give them, or update their own set of conditions, so that they kind of have a mixture of the specialty use restrictions, as well as some of their own. The tattoo facility is defined as a main, a tattoo facility means any room, space, location, area, structure, or business, or any part of these places where tattooing is practiced, or where the business of tattooing is conducted. That's the existing definition, and we're proposing no change to that. Now, back up here. So currently, specialty uses are permitted if it is demonstrated that in the central business district, the use is located within a building that contains spaces devoted to at least two businesses other than the specialty use. So that's like a strip mall. So it would have to be in a strip mall where there are other uses in that. And B, there's no more than one specialty use within a radius of 300 feet. So again, this spaces them out, so that they're not accumulated. And security measures associated with the use do not include metal bars or roll down shutters over the doors and windows. And then in the CG, commercial general, activity center, destination, select use districts, again, there's no more than one specialty use within a radius of 750 feet, and the use is located within a retail center that contains spaces devoted to at least two businesses other than a specialty use, and again, with the security measures. So that applies to the specialty uses. So that, originally, that applied to tattoo parlors, as well as all of the tattoo requirements as well, because it had them kind of double listed. So what we are proposing is, as you see here, under S in our conditional uses, tattoo facilities are permitted, if it is demonstrated that. And in one, it essentially says that they have to abide by all state requirements. So the state has certain restrictions on tattoo facilities with regard to the distance they have to be. They have to be 1,000 feet from a church, school, or playground, and it defines that distance. We are proposing to also take, and these would be conditionally required within those districts, as outlined before, that there's no more than one tattoo facility use located within a radius of 750 feet. So that takes one of those specialty use items and applies it here. And again, that, I think, because we're opening it up to so many zoning districts, it opens up a lot more of the city to tattoo facilities, but it restricts how close they can be from one another. So it prevents that density from occurring. Number three, it will be located a minimum of, and it originally read 400 or 500 feet, and this is obviously up for debate amongst the members of the board, but we're recommending 400 feet from the outer wall of the occupied space of the tattoo business to the nearest property line of a residential district or use, measured in a straight line. And number four, and this is already existing, it will be located a minimum distance of 200 feet from the outer wall of the occupied space of the tattoo facility to the nearest boundary of a residential district or property line of a residential use, measured in a straight line, provided the following conditions are met, that it is separated from the residential district by an arterial or collector's street of at least four lanes and commercial development, or it is located with a buffered, or it is buffered with a type C buffer yard from a residential district. So that way, it gives it a couple of options. You can either be directly 400 feet in a straight line from a residential district, or it could be separated by that street, that four-lane street, or a buffer yard. And then we amended the, we show the strike throughs on number five, where the signage complies with the standards and requirements in Part Five, subject to the added restrictions of, and we took out window signage, such that it would allow window signage, but they can, we left in flashing, because we do not allow flashing signs. But we took out neon and LED signage, because that is a common type of signage, as long as it's not flashing or strobing in any way. And they're still allowed to have reader board signage, or signs containing animation, as long as they, the animation would have to be, comply with our rules, where it changes the, you know, it has to hold the message for six seconds, I believe, and it has to complete the change within two seconds. That's like your common LED signs that you see at a lot of churches and businesses around town. And then we took out the language of within direct line of sight of any adjacent residential district or use.
Mr. Dudley, can I stop you there? Maybe I'm just reading this wrong, but you've left in, subject to the added restrictions of no flashing, or reader board signage, or signs containing animation.
Yes, that's correct. I'm sorry.
It came across as if you were allowing...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. You're right. So they would not be allowed to have any flashing, reader board, or animated signs.
Yes.
You're correct. I got confused myself. I apologize. And then number six is, they would be allowed to have static window signage, including neon, LED. However, the signage cannot exceed 25% of the front facade window area. And window signage is only permitted within the front facade windows, and the storefront window area cannot be tinted greater than 10%. And I also carried over the security measures, where it says, security measures associated with the use do not include metal bars or roll down shutters over doors and windows. And then the hours of the tattoo facility will be between 8:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. So this concludes the recommendations from staff. And the red items in this are the ones we've added. And then the yellow highlighted ones are the ones that we've struck through from the existing, and then replaced with the red, obviously.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Anyone of the commissioners have a question for, good evening. Any questions for staff before we go to the public hearing portion of this?
I don't.
Please.
Why did you recommend there's no more than one tattoo facility used located within a radius of 750 feet? Why is that?
I pulled that directly from the specialty uses category, and it's to prevent an accumulation or a density of tattoo parlors in one given location, so that they're kind of spaced around the district, or it creates a spacing of them. That was my reasoning, or staff's reasoning, yes.
Thank you.
Do you know what the state requirement is on that? Does the state have a distance?
I don't think, between tattoo facilities, they do not. They do require them to be a certain distance from the churches, schools, and playgrounds.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions for staff? Hearing none. I will open the public hearing portion of this. This will allow anyone in the audience to come forward and speak for or against. If you do come up, we'd like you to go to the podium there and give us your name. And I'll ask, well, this can be limited people, so please come forward and give us your name, please.
So, I'm taking this.
Oh, yeah, I forgot. Last month, I remember seeing that.
So my name's Katrina Perry, and I'm the owner of Dreaming Ink, or partial owner of Dreaming Ink Tattoos. We just opened recently. I did have some questions for you. So one, I want to say thank you for looking at those and making suggestions. But as Shalonda had mentioned, you know, I also wonder why do you want to keep a space between the 750, you know, why is that a space requirement issue and safety concern?
I brought that strictly over from, it was originally categorized as a specialty use in our originally adopted ordinance, and that was one of the requirements in the specialty uses. And in order to blend the two, but not, but in order to also open it up to other zoning districts, that's, I brought it over. But obviously, you know, that was the direct language from that section of code. And, you know, if justified, that could be reduced in some way, obviously.
Is there any way that you could probably maybe eliminate that? Because I don't see it as being, you know, any type of safety concern at all. I see it as actually being a barrier for us to, you know, bring more business into the city. And I'll give you an example. The state does not have any requirements, by the way. Is that Seaboard Street in Myrtle Beach? They are zoned for only one particular area, and it's tattoo shop, at the tattoo shop, at the tattoo shop. They all flourish. So that would be another, you know, question I would have. Could you take that and reconsider that? Because we have a very difficult time finding places here, and we want to be able to bring money into the city. So the more limitations that we have, it's gonna, it's really difficult. Let me put it that way. And now tattoos are just part of the ordinary. It just is. Some people don't agree with it because of, you know, whatever issues, mostly it's, you know, religious issues, and I'm fine with that. But again, it's just a norm these days. And so I would ask that y'all would probably, you know, at least reconsider that. And I also would like to know why we could not, why is there no flashing, like an open sign? A lot of places have a flashing open sign. Why is that an issue?
Flashing signs aren't allowed in the city at all.
At all?
At all.
Because I see some.
Well, then...
Especially the CBD stores, because they are like ridiculously, like, it's terrible.
If you report them to us, we'll send those in.
I'll send you some lists then, if that's, if that's seriously, like, for across the board then, because I didn't realize that was across the board.
It's a traffic and safety concern.
Okay.
Yeah, it's DOT regulation as well.
Understood there. Okay. Is there anything else that you would like to come up against?
The state's gonna change.
Well, for the church.
Excuse me. We have to have all of some of the records, so there can't be communication. If you'd like to come forward and discuss that, that'd be great, because we have a recording of this, so we can have it in a minute. And your name, sir?
Brian Perry, owner of Dreaming Ink Tattoo Studio. Where it says the state is rewriting, it's already been rewritten right now. It's a bill on the governor's desk. He's waiting on the signature. As soon as he signs it, it becomes law. It's being rewritten right now, as far as the church being within 1,000 feet of a school, church, or playground. It's also being, other things are being rewritten in that same law. And it's already been formed into a bill. It's laying on the governor's desk for the master to sign. So if y'all are doing the revisions on the, as far as the city regulations, my personal opinion, I cut it off where it says, as long as you follow the state's laws. Y'all go into what the state laws are. But that's getting ready to change. And that's kind of confused some people that tries to open up another one in the city or whatever, because that's no longer gonna be the state law. It's gonna change. And like I said, it's sitting on the governor's desk now to be signed. I mean, that's the only thing that I had, that I seen.
Well, let me address one thing, and you brought that up. I don't think anyone sees it as a risk.
I have been told, when I tried to open this one, that, and I'm not gonna mention any names, we have to protect the citizens of Florence. What are you protecting from? I got it in the email. What are you protecting them from? That's my, what are you protecting them from? We are heavily regulated by the state and D E C. What are you protecting them from? That's my, and that was from the zoning. I could go into it. We must protect the citizens of Florence.
In response to what?
That's when I was trying to get zoned in. It was not easy to get zoned in.
Right. But they've made that easier, right?
Not then, no.
These regulations don't help?
It will help. Yeah, it will help in the future. But I'm already in now. But I had to fight to get where I'm at now, because somebody up here don't like tattoos. I don't know, I know who told me that, that they have to protect citizens of Florence. And it is a privilege for me to be able to do business in the city of Florence. It's a privilege for y'all to have us here, because we bring a ton of money in here. And people don't just come, when they come to get tattoos, they go out and eat. They go shopping. They make it a day of it. So we bring money into the city of Florence. But for him to say that it's a privilege for me to be able to do business in the city of Florence, nope, rethink that. We bring money here.
Noted. But I mean, we obviously just know that we can, that's not on our...
It was from the...
It's not on our agenda. There's not much we can do about that. I hear you, and I understand where you're coming from, but...
But it was hard. And I met every qualification I had to meet by the state, D E C, and the city of Florence, and they still didn't want to let me. They still didn't want to zone me.
Well, I listen, I hear you. I hear you.
I'm bringing it up.
Where you need to have your discussion is with city council.
Oh, I did. That's how I got in.
Yeah, we're just a recommending body, and we look what's in front of us. And, you know, it's either, we look out for the citizens and what's in the best interest, and we don't make the change. The city council does. But thank you all for coming forward, and I appreciate what y'all do. I have been at this long enough to remember when it was first allowed in the state of South Carolina, and this room would be full of people that were against it. And it's refreshing to see how it has progressed. And we may still have a little growing to do or learning to do, but we're, I'm just pleased it has gotten where it is now, and it continues.
You can remember that?
[laughing]
That might make you a senior.
All right. Anyone else like to come forward and speak for or against this? If not, I'll close the public hearing portion of this. And the way it stands, as staff has made the changes, is what we're here to either approve or send it back to staff and say, maybe we would consider recommending to the city council that we reduce that. We've sent it back last month for staff to work on it. And I will either entertain a motion that we vote to either accept this, as has been presented to us tonight, or to postpone it to next month for further clarification from, you know, staff. And so if I open it up to the commissioners, they either make a motion, or we can have further discussion.
I have a question, but if you want to make the motion first, I can hold my question.
Go ahead.
I had a question, too.
You got a question? Okay. To address, I think you, staff did a great job in trying to accommodate some of the issues that were brought up at the last meeting. Now, further with this state code law as it pertains, if the law changes, then of course, then you would have to amend this, so that...
That's correct. And the way it's worded, too, even if it didn't get amended immediately, we would abide by the state law if it got reduced, yeah. Absolutely.
That was number one. And then number two, question about this, no more than one tattoo facility used located within a radius of 750 feet. And then you went to the minimum distance from 500 to 400 feet from the outer wall of an occupied space, tattoo business near, nearest property line. Again, tell us where you brought line number two in from the other ordinances that the city presently has.
That's correct. And that's a starting point. I mean, obviously, as staff, when we're addressing issues that are adopted in the ordinance, we have to have a starting point. And, you know, that was the one, that was the distance that was adopted for specialty uses. So from a conservative standpoint, I carry that language directly over. But there is some, I would agree, there seems to be some contradiction there, because it's 750 feet from other establishments, but only 400 feet from a residential district. So there may be some contradiction or some conflict there. But we had to have a starting point, and I started with what was in the code from a conservative standpoint. But Planning Commission could obviously discuss it and make some recommendations to staff.
Mr. Trevor, do you have a question?
No, it was actually about that. It was about the state, and so it was answered in his question. So it, I mean, it appears to me that we loosened the requirements a little bit, which was what we were trying to, kind of hoping for. Maybe it's not perfect, but it's better than it was. I don't think we're in the business of deferring to the state. I mean, they're, you know, and if something's sitting on the governor's desk, who knows how long it could sit on the governor's desk. I'm inclined to try to get this approved. And if the state changes, if he changes it tomorrow, then we're gonna change automatically. So, but if we don't make these changes, then you're stuck with what, where it is right now, which I don't think was, I don't think anybody wanted that. So, I mean, that's kind of where I am on this. Unless there's a glaring shortage of what one of the commissioners thinks should have been in here that isn't there, or needs to change, then I'd be inclined to recommend that we approve.
Yes, ma'am.
One of my recommendations is that for, there's, for number two, with the 750 feet, just more clarification or a shorter distance for me. So if we could go back and fix that, that would be something that I would, would like for us to recommend to the board.
Yeah, and I'm surprised by that one. And I mean, I can't ask them, they've already spoken. But it would seem to me that a business owner would not want competition right on top of them. That's the conflict I was getting there. I don't think anybody wants Florence to be similar to Seaboard Street in Myrtle Beach. That's a different market and a different group of people that they're appealing to, transient people, vacation, temporary...
He's not talking about tattoos. He's talking about the other entertainment.
Right. I'm just saying that, you know, there are people that converge on that area. And I think that that seems to me to be what you guys were trying to accomplish.
Yes.
My concern is, what is the right distance? I mean, and my first thought is, let's vote on this, send it to the city council, and then have city council, if they have, are uncomfortable with this, send it back to us. And we're forced to define what is that perfect distance, if there should be one at all. But we're not knowledgeable enough, and that's why we were gonna rely on y'all and other tattoo businesses to advise us. But we're gonna have people that may be against that. So we'll have that full room again. So this can help you immediately. If we vote on it and it passes to go to the city council, you can have your same discussion with them, and they can send it back to us and say, we agree with y'all. We need to tighten up. So I'm not, as chairman, I don't make motions, and I'm not trying to direct any of the commissioners. But that's just my thought on passing what we have in front of us or not, and learn from this and go forward.
Well, I didn't formally make a motion. I did everything but. But I will formally make a motion that we approve this. And then it'll go to city council. City council can have their, a time to evaluate it. And if it needs to be changed, it comes back to us. But in the meantime, we've started giving you some relief. And who knows, that could wind up being months.
So your motion is to...
To approve it as it was submitted by staff.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve any further discussion. I, I keep looking at your face, it looks like it wants to say something.
Yeah.
Um, okay, no further discussion, discussion, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor say aye, like signs nay and the ayes have it. Thank you all, thank you for your input and we'll probably rely on that more in the future. All right, uh, next item is PC twenty twenty-four dash thirteen, this is a request for sketch plan review, Mr. Johnston, good evening.
Hey, good evening, everyone. All right, so this is sketch plan review for Bruce Tract Homes, uh, between Bannockburn and Green Acres Road. It's zoned RG three, this was just recently, um, annexed into the city. So here's the sketch plan, it's a hundred and thirty-seven acres total, a hundred and six acres to be developed, uh, they have taken advantage of setting aside open space for a cluster type subdivision, uh, so they can go down to forty-five foot lot widths and forty-five hundred square feet because they have set aside at least thirty percent of the overall acreage for, um, open space, uh, ponds, recreation, uh, whatever they so choose to, to use that for. Uh, phase one will have ninety-one lots, uh, phase two will as well, phase three ninety-two, phase four ninety-one, um, for a total of three hundred and sixty-five homes at build out. It does have city water, uh, city sewer, and also it will be under the jurisdiction of the city, uh, stormwater. And the open space, common space, including the ponds, will be taken care of by the developer and then the HOA. So the streets will also be constructed by the developer and then taken over by the city after inspection, they'll be built to the city standards. They are required to put a type C buffer yard along Bannockburn and Green Acres Road to prevent, um, rear lot frontage and non-vehicular access, uh, to the back of people's properties and also buffer it from traffic, lighting, all that good stuff. And, uh, the type C buffer yard, three canopy trees, three under story trees, three evergreen trees and thirty shrubs, that's every one hundred linear feet, so it should look pretty nice. Uh, the sketch plan is in compliance with the unified development ordinance and after sketch plan approval, they will have to go through a development plan process, which is, uh, much more stringent regulations. So that does conclude staff's report.
Thank you, Mr. Johnston.
Thank you.
This does not require a public hearing, is there, are there any questions from the commissioners as it relates to staff and, uh, regarding this particular?
Does it have a name, does it have a name on it, is there a name on it?
Oh, Bruce Tract Homes, the owner of the property's name was Bruce, Bruce Tract Homes.
I saw that, I want to make sure that was what I was, that was correct.
That's right.
Was the traffic study done? I know we've been having a lot of issues with traffic, um...
The, uh, traffic study is, we did, we did receive it, it is part of the sketch plan application, I don't remember anything being out of the ordinary, so, nothing of note, but yes, ma'am, it, it did occur as part of the sketch plan application.
Any other questions? I'll call for the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like signs nay, the ayes have it, and we'll move next to...
And actually, I would like to clarify before, um, I believe they asked us if they could provide that at the development plan stage, so we did take that request into account that at the development plan, they would have a traffic study. So we don't have that at this time, but we did make an agreement that we would look forward to that later, so I apologize for that.
All right, um, I didn't even ask for discussion on that vote, so I apologize. Um, I would be willing to back up if anyone else had further discussion, even though we have voted to approve it. Okay, thank you, apologize for that. Uh, the next item is PC twenty twenty-four dash fourteen, this is a request to rezone the parcel at fourteen oh one Fairfax Road. Ms. Lane?
Um, I did not catch a motion or a second on that.
Yeah, I don't think we actually had a motion.
You just jumped to, the ayes have it.
Well, uh, if we want to go back, I can do that.
Who wants to?
Okay, who wants to have the motion?
We approve that sketch plan as submitted.
And who wants a second?
A second.
All right, okay, um, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor say aye, like signs nay. You know, it's funny, when I did that, I thought, I went through that really quickly.
Something was missing.
All right, Ms. Lane, this is a request to rezone.
That's correct, this is, um, a parcel that is located at the end of Fairfax Road at Hillside Avenue and as you can see, it is located, um, within the floodplain and, um, this particular parcel was zoned open space and recreation when the new zoning map was adopted in twenty eighteen along with the unified development ordinance. Um, everything else around it in that, in that neighborhood was zoned NC fifteen, which is suitable for the, uh, size of the parcels and the use. Um, under the old zoning ordinance, um, under the old map, it was also zoned R one, so it was zoned for single family. So our understanding is that it probably just got sucked up into the zoning for the, um, golf course and because the north side of that parcel is also in the floodplain. So, um, but the problem with that, and we discovered this when some, when they were having the property appraised, what would be that if that, um, single family residential is not a permitted use in the OSR district, so if that house were to burn down or get flooded out, um, as it's owned right now, they would not be able to rebuild. So this is just cleaning this up a little bit and, uh, so staff recommends the NC fifteen, which is in keeping with the neighborhood, so that's all this is all about. So, um, the future land use map also, uh, we'll have to clean that up as well because it does have it as parks and open space and again, because it's being on the verge between the residential and the, and the golf course. Um, but as you can see, it is a house, it is not a, uh, creek or, or a golf course, so we just wanted to make sure that the property owners would be protected. So that concludes staff's report.
Excellent, I wish we had more of these. Um, any questions? Uh, hearing none, I will open the public hearing, uh, portion of this, if there's anyone for or against, you're welcome to come forward. Seeing none, I close the public hearing and call for a motion.
Make a motion, we approve.
Motion and a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve any discussion. Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor say aye, like signs nay and the ayes have it. Much better, Drew, much better, okay. Um, PC twenty twenty-four dash fifteen, this is a request for a sketch plan review and Mr. Johnston, you see they're, they're, they're working double time tonight.
Thank you for your patience. All right, so this is sketch plan review of Magnolia Farm subdivision, phases six through nine. So we've already had, um, one through five, uh, approved by planning commission. So here are the tax map numbers, we are starting to get into Darlington County.
Oh.
You can see Hoffmeyer Road and also Anderson Farm Road as parameters to the development. And it is zoned RG three. So here is a master plan phasing map as it stands, so the red arrows down at the bottom, uh, the orientation, you can see the north arrow is pointing to the left, so Hoffmeyer Road's on your right, Anderson Farm Road is on the bottom to help kind of orient this. Uh, so phase six is at the very bottom, then you move up to phase seven and then phase eight is northernmost red arrow and phase nine's here on the left side. So those are the phases we're talking about, six through nine. All right, here's phase six, so it's a hundred and nine acres to be developed for, for all the phases, this is a continuation of Magnolia Farm subdivision, which all told approximately three hundred acres, eight hundred seventy-nine lots, that's just approximate at this point. Uh, so phase six is thirty-one point three five acres, this will be seventy-eight lots. Uh, this is a conventional type as opposed to the cluster one we just looked at, this is conventional, six thousand square foot lots, uh, sixty foot lot widths. Again, city water, sewer, and it will be our stormwater jurisdiction. Uh, common space, uh, open space and ponds will be privately maintained by HOA. Um, also the streets will eventually become city streets constructed by the developer. Uh, here's phase seven, this is eighty lots on twenty-eight acres. Uh, phase eight, had to think about it for a sec, my Roman numerals are not strong, uh, twenty-five point seven four acres is eighty-three lots. And then finally phase nine, uh, twenty-four acres at fifty lots. So the sketch plan is compliant with the unified development ordinance, there are a couple of variance requests, which I'll go into on the next slide. So they're requesting a, a variance from the total length that a dead-end cul-de-sac can be, uh, the code limits it to four hundred feet and on Little Jim Lane, they are asking that, um, they're asking planning commission to permit a seven hundred foot dead-end cul-de-sac length, it's a variation of about three hundred feet. The reason for this in our ordinance is just to prevent how long it takes the fire truck or EMS to turn around, um, so the shorter distance, the smaller amount of time they can make a, a U-turn, but the difference between four hundred feet and seven hundred feet, staff, uh, feels comfortable supporting this variance request.
Mr. Johnston, we had this come up, was it the last meeting, a meeting before last?
It, it does come up fairly often, you, I guess you have to strike the chord between, we do get this request sometimes, yes, sir.
Okay, was it with the same developer that requested this last time?
I don't believe so, no, sir.
Okay, all right.
And, and, yeah, there, um, oh, sorry. And then the other variance request is, um, for a, an, a more acute angle for a longitudinal curve, whatever that means. Uh, so the street is only allowed to be so acute, it needs to be obtuse to just permit, you know, safe flow of traffic, um, the code calls for a hundred and fifty foot radii for local streets, they're requesting in a couple of locations to have a longitudinal curve of one hundred feet. Uh, staff is also in support of this, uh, we feel that they're going to reduce the speed limit to fifteen in these locations and it may actually act as sort of a traffic calming measure. Um, so it, it is a, it is a change, but we feel it's a small enough change in a couple specific locations that we feel that we can also support this request. So that does conclude staff's report.
Thank you, Mr. Johnston, any questions? Um, hearing none, there's not a public hearing, so, um, if there are no questions of staff, I'll call for a motion.
I, I, I got one question, I remember this from way back, going into Darlington County now, what kind of agreement we did with Darlington County?
Oh, what kind of agreement?
Yeah, we're, we're working through that now with, um, Darlington County officials, we, um, prior to the annexation, we contacted the Darlington County Administrator and, and had a, had a meeting and talked about the annexation, um, they, they were good with it, but what we've got to, it, it's going to be a lot of work for the city, we've got to coordinate with a lot of departments, um, you know, tax assessors, uh, police departments, fire departments, even recreation, um, to figure out where, where, you know, obviously all members of the city can participate in, um, city recreation, but, but, you know, they may also be eligible for Darlington County where they reside, so we're, we're actually working through that, um, with the various departments in, in Darlington County. They, um, you know, they're, they're still a ways off from actually having residents that, that live in this area, uh, so it's, it's not quite imperative that we, we figure all this out, but we have started the process, uh, of, of working through that. Um, there's a number of other municipalities in the state, um, I know Hardyville, Columbia, Charleston, all spread into multiple counties and, and we've been talking to them as well, um, some officials there to see how they work through the issues as well. So, yeah, we're, 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 we're working through it, it's, it's a bit complicated, but we're working through it.
Okay, all right, any other questions?
And this is the last, uh, phase of this project?
No, sir.
So, uh, once you're approved, the date goes, uh, uh, what is it, five through nine, is that what?
Oh, it's six through nine.
Six through nine?
Yes.
And how many houses is that?
This will be total...
Just in this phase?
Two ninety-one, thank you, help from the audience.
Two ninety.
Thanks, Drew.
All right. No further questions, um, call for a motion. Have we already done that?
Newly approved.
Second, you got a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye, like signs nay, ayes have it, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Johnston. Proposed amendment to section four dash twelve point five point one.
We, we did, um, make some amendments to this and the, a subcommittee of planning commission was formed to review that, um, I believe Elaine had emailed those out to the committee, I would suggest that we try to find a time for that committee to get together to talk with staff, um, about the issues, um, one, one to explain, um, some of the terminology, floodplains and edge of bank and that sort of thing and, and so we could discuss that, I would, um, that would be staff's request there.
I, I think that's best, one commissioner had a pretty passionate response to it and I don't really know how to respond to that, you know, I, I almost think we're going to have to now get in the same room and talk about it.
Yeah, and, and we can pull up maps and we can look at what that means, I think that would be very...
So can we just charge staff with putting that together or do we need to vote on that?
I, I think you can just charge staff with, with putting that together.
Done.
Charged.
Yep. And I would like to, can I make one other comment?
Yeah, please.
If I may, um, with regards to the, the four hundred foot cul-de-sacs, um, you know, we have talked about that and, um, the, um, the thought is, is that, that we as staff like to keep it in the ordinance because we'd rather that be the, longer cul-de-sacs be the exception rather than the norm. Um, you know, y- you don't want to go into a neighborhood and have a, you know, five cul-de-sac roads going up with no connectivity, um, you know, and, and we're afraid if we outright allow it in the code, that, that could possibly happen. Um, however, we, we aren't against it in certain instances because, you know, the shape of parcels, the shape of, um, you know, the geography of the land or the topography of the land, um, and the geometry of the streets and the lots sometimes make for a situation where a longer cul-de-sac has to occur. Um, and, you know, we as staff, uh, when a variance request is made, if we examine it, um, and we find a flaw in it or, or some reason why it couldn't, we shouldn't, you know, approve that, we would make that clear to, to planning commission, so...
Well, I think it has to be applied fairly and I know you, you go out of your way to do that, but while one developer might be able to get it and while another one can't, I think it needs to be justified and explained and, and we kind of stay within that same path or guardrail because if you start giving it to others and not to, it's got to be justified.
And, and we could, um, going forward when the variance request, we can, I know we sometimes make a blanket statement, but we could, we could provide some of our justifications and support for that as well, yeah, we'd be glad to.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be interesting to know, uh, a reason why you wouldn't approve it.
Right, I, I think, I think you could have one that's excess, that's too long, um, or where, um, you know, I think we wouldn't be in favor of it if, if there was opportunity for connection, um, you know, uh, within the neighborhood, uh, per se. Um, but a lot of times, you know, it's up against a wetland or, you know, it's at the tail end of the subdivision and, you know, there's a, there's a stream or a, or a, a street or another neighborhood or some reason why you can't and, and it just has to occur, so, yeah.
Cool. Mr. Moses?
Make a motion, you're adjourned.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
See you in June. June what?